A technical order to the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education, regular meeting on August 1st, 2002 at 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off the silent your cell phone and stand for the pleasure decision.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our indigenous land acknowledgements tickets. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Nationality People whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Nationality People and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Second Archibor Indian Tribe have resided and have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. We're going to do our roll call.
Katie Reed here. Jessica Jordan here.
Ethan Thompson here.
Tim O'Kirk here.
Deanne Tangle here.
Amy Butler here.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Seconded.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Any approves? Thank you, everybody. That moves us right into our superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. The first two items on our report are a continuation of our policy topic that we have been working on since March. This evening, Linda and I are going to review the series 4,000 and 5,000 policies again. Again, this is just a quick review, open and over the topics. Underneath this list, we will ask for your approval on a resolution that will repeal and replace our Neola policies with true policies. And then, as we've shared the last couple of meetings, we will then begin at our next meeting, going through each policy, probably five or six at a time, so it will take us through the next school year where we'll look really individually at each policy and make sure they're personalized to fit our needs. We may have to revisit policies once or twice so that I can have the discussion, get legal feedback, good feedback, I should say, from our legal counsel, and then come back together. But for this evening's purposes, my group Linda is going to review the 4,000s and then I will review the 5,000s.
Okay, the 4,000 are about district employment. 4101, non-discrimination. 4102, anti-harassment, including sexual harassment. 4103, whistleblower's protection. 4104, employment complaint procedures. And 4104, form, discrimination retaliation complaint form. 4105, workplace accommodations for employees and applicants with disabilities. 4106, family and medical leave act. 4107, military leave. 4108, union activity and representation. 4109, break time for nursing mothers. 4110, reimbursement. 4111, professional development. 4112, extracurricular employees or volunteers. Section 4200 is about employee conduct and ethics. 4201, employee ethics and standards and the form that goes with that. 4202, children's protective services, reporting on student safety and welfare. 4203, corporal punishment and limited use of reasonable force and the administrative guideline that goes with that. 4204, confidentiality of student information. 4205, hiring and background checks and the administrative guidelines that go with the criminal justice information system and security. 4206, employee contracts. 4207, third-party contracting of non-instructional support services. 4208, applicant and employee criminal arrest, charge, conviction. 4209, prohibition against abortion referrals and assistance. 4210, drug and alcohol-free workplace, tobacco product restrictions. 4211, alcohol and controlled substances for transportation employees subject to the Omnibus Transportation Employee Testing Act. 4212, employee assistance program. 4213, anti-nepotism. 4214, outside activities and employment. 4215, district technology and acceptable use policy. 4216, personal communication devices. 4217, social media. 4218, employee dress and appearance. 4219, attendance. 4220, use or disposal of district property. 4221, employee speech. 4222, unauthorized work stoppage and strikes. 4223, resignation. 4224, personnel files and payroll information. 4300, about non-exempt staff. 4301 is the definition. 4302, minimum wage and overtime. 4304, employee timekeeping responsibilities. 4305, Michigan pay medical leave act. 4306, assignment and transfer. 4307, performance evaluation. 4308, reduction and recall of non-exempt staff. 4309, discipline and termination. 4400 for professional staff. 4401 is the definition. 4402, assignment and transfer. 4403, performance evaluation. 4404, performance-based compensation for teachers. 4405, reduction, force, and recall. 4406, professional improvements of animals. 4407, discipline. 4408, termination. 4409, non-renewal. 4500 for administrators and supervisors. 4501 is the definition. 4502, assignment and transfer. 4503, performance evaluation. 4504, performance-based compensation. 4505, reduction and recall. 4506, discipline. 4507, termination. 4508, administrator non-renewal. 4600, the superintendent. 4601, general guidelines. 4602, hiring. 4603, performance evaluation. 4604, absence, incapacity. 4605, gifts and donations. 4606, discipline and termination. 4607, non-renewal. And that wraps up the 4,000s. Thank you, Linda. So, anyone have any specific question about any of the 4,000 policies?
Okay, I will move into the 5,000s, which are focused on students, curriculum, and academic banners. The 5,100 are student rights, focused on student expression, lockers, search and seizure, age of majority, collaboration with outside entities, and transgender students. 5,200 is student conduct and discipline, and that includes investigation, arrest, and other law enforcement contact, unlawful discrimination, harassment, and retaliation against students, peasing, student appearance and dress code, student handbooks, student discipline, student due process, student with disabilities, reinstatement following expulsion, enrollment following misconduct at another public or non-public school, suspension from a class, subject, or activity by teacher, anti-bullying policy. And I will just note 5,207, we will be approving separately as is required by state law. We'll ask you to approve that separately. 5,208, student acceptable use and internet safety policy. 5,209, student use of cell phones and electronic communication devices. 5,210, GPS tracking device with audio surveillance capabilities. 5,211, emergency use of seclusion restraint. 5,212, registered sex offenders. And 5,213, personal protection orders against students. 5,300 is focused on student enrollment, attendance, and records, and that includes compulsory attendance, absenteeism, intruency, enrollment in kindergarten, student enrollment and withdrawal, non-public school students, part-time attendance, schools of choice, foreign students, homeless students, protection of people rights, student records and directory information. 5,400 is curriculum instruction and parent and guardian involvement versus parent and guardian involvement in education, communication appearance of guardians, rights of non-histodial parents or guardians, free textbooks, materials, and charging of fees and fines. Title I, parent and family engagement policy. Title I funds, instructional programs and curriculum development, academic credits, commencement and completion ceremonies, student promotion, retention, and placement, class rank, senior recognition, summer school, homebound and hospitalized instruction, homework, grades, reading assessments, instruction, intervention, and retention, sex education, and work-based learning experience. 5,500 are school-sponsored and extracurricular activities versus fundraising activities, student senate, bulletin boards and other student postings, school-sponsored publications or productions, school attendance on days of scheduled activities, field trips, extracurricular activities, extracurricular and athletic trips, public appearances of school groups, student-initiated non-curricular clubs, and secret organizations. 5,600 is student support services. Those policies involve special education and independent educational evaluation, section 504, and student assistance process. 5700 focuses on student health and safety. 5701, child abuse and neglect, student nervousness and injury, medications, student insurance, emergency anaphylaxis, opioid antagonists, school wellness policy, do not resuscitate order, an administrative guideline for do not resuscitate orders, lights, nits, and bedbugs, student suicide prevention, toilet training, concussion awareness, immunization, and communicable diseases. 5800 is miscellaneous, and that includes close campus, student transportation, student driving and parking, work permits, student audio and video recording, recording of district meetings, flag display, and pledge of allegiance. And those are the 5,000s, which are focused on students and curriculum. Are any questions about those policies?
I have a question. I have a statement question. I know we've been talking about how these policies are much easier to understand, easy to read, but, and I know we want to replace you right before, you know, school, you don't want to be left open, but I think in 5106, it reads a little different, a little bit more like a declaration, and there's a lot there. And kind of, I think there's further clarity that might be needed because we want to protect all students, and thankfully, we have anti-discrimination law, changes to Title IX coming in October. I liked in the handbook, I know we're going to talk about later on page 19, the high school rules are very clear on anti-discrimination, but for protecting students, the district parents, teachers, support staff, it just seems that some of it is unclear, what some of it means. You know, like, one thing says, like, as appropriate, you know, the information I share is appropriate, and I think, does everyone understand what that might mean? I think there's just some ramifications if people are interpreting this differently, and so, just because it's a sense of topic and we want students to be protected and everyone to be on board, I just, there's a little level there because I'm just not sure it's completely clear that everyone would know what the procedure and policies are. And if we did decide to not, you know, like, I know we're going through them all, but I was nervous that if we go forward with this and it's unclear exactly what that means for students, district, parents, teachers, support staff, I mean, procedures, that would that leave us vulnerable in some ways? So that was just one of the questions I had. I know, again, whatever we do tonight, I'm thankful that law supersedes policy, right? And it's very clear. And also, I would assume tomorrow too, that because it's in the handbook, that is going to be on the forefront and communicated. So, again, it was time for discussion, not that it was just, there was so much there, and I, again, I know we're going through it, but it was like, if we adopt this and there's uncertainty about what this looks like, and I don't know if that's at building level, I don't know if that's policy-wise. Those are some questions I have.
So, one of the things I thought about as far as our review of policies is that if we're all in agreement, we don't necessarily have to start at the beginning of our policies and go forward. So we could say that for the first review section, we want to review, maybe it is the 5,000s because that does involve students, and that might be where we would have the soonest impact, or even the 4,000s with it being focused on employees. So I guess I was, my thought was, I wanted to ask tonight, like, where do you want to start next? Because I can, I can create a schedule that shows where we're going to agree on all those things, but certainly, student situations will come up more quickly, likely, than other kinds of situations. So if the board thought that that would be an appropriate place to start, we could start with clarification on some of those policies. But in my mind, for these policies, the two most important areas are the two areas that we reviewed tonight, and that would be with employees and with students. I think that we are often, as we have situations come up, looking back at like, well, what does the policy say? What is, you know, and that tends to be more with our challenging situations that involve staff and students. So I don't know if that helps or not, but that was just a thought that I think kind of feeds into that because I think that as we go through situations, the question of, so here's the policy, what does that, what I guess is being implemented, is common, right? I think that's, that's sort of the nature of these being written in a way that's general enough that it is subject to a little bit of interpretation. So, just my thoughts, but I'll let anyone else.
So, my feeling is, not just this one, but many, right? So, whenever you have some new policies, you're always going to have groups who aren't quite sure, is this the same or different than what we've been doing? And there's going to be confusion, I think it's around many of these areas, and it's probably going to take a couple of years before it all kind of settles down. The other thing I think to also do understand is, there are guidelines, right? Administrative guidelines, so there are clarities in processes and forms and step-by-steps for a lot of these policies that also could provide clarity that we haven't had a chance to partnership with the policy that is stated here. But I was thinking about that today was, you know, what are the ones that we're going to have the most confusion on? Is there confusion? I mean, at the reading that I've done, there's a significant amount of parallels, right? It's not that much different than what we've been doing, and I think you guys have done a very nice job of making sure that they're aligned to our current policies that we have, knowing that there's often a lot of choices within those policies. But I think you're right, I think there's going to be some confusion, there's a whole bunch of sections in here that I can see what we have to implement, and people to be like, I'm not quite sure, is that the same as what they meant last time, or is this new? Right? So, but I think that's going to be one of the good benefits of us talking about too. I think that's going to help get language out there so they can know how we understand or review some of the policies.
And I think that's the whole point of us doing a deep dive, right? Whole chunks. We can't review, you know, a hundred policies on one day. We can accept them and then, you know, make that commitment that we're going to systematically go through chunks where we make sure it's like, because even sometimes between policies is a little bit of, you can tell, like, they are meant for general, not for our district. They were written much more generally, and there's a lot of areas where I feel we could tighten to make sure they reflect our district. And I think starting in the 5,000, 5,000 would make sense. My suggestion is, there's only a few in the 1,000 that are very big picture, that I think maybe if we start there and kind of have that all-encompassing, you know, submission, submission, make sure that's nice before we start with the 5,000. There's not that many, it won't take us that long, but it might provide the umbrella that we want to make sure is really what we want it to be before we get into, with the student superstaff. Does that, would that make sense with everybody? And then we also, within the 5,000, maybe we don't have to go in order, you know, we could tackle sections that we feel need to address sooner in the year so that we're not waiting until February to get to the ones. But I would argue that it's not just 5106. I think there is a number of them that are a little bit more vague, and I'm guessing on purpose so that districts can customize.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing that all of us, as we went through these, found a few that people really wanted to dive into. I know that I did, for sure. So, I feel like that's a group that kind of determined what are the ones that we have the most questions about, the most concerned about, are the ones that we most want to tailor to our district as soon as possible.
And if, if there are other policies that stand out like that, maybe even if you all wanted to send them to management, there's also no saying that we have to do, you know, a whole section at a time, so if we know, for example, that 5106 is one, and if there are a few others, we can build that in and sort of front look at, so that way we get those questions answered first, and then go back to the ones that, you know, we know are probably, you know, boilerplate language kind of thing. So, that, that would be fine. I mean, I could set up a calendar for that. That was my plan, is just to look at the policies and map out, you know, the next several months of our meetings, and so that way we have plenty of time, ahead of time, to really read that particular policy so that you know what's coming up at the next meeting.
And I'm sure there's more, this one was so robust, but it was also, I was thinking, you know, as, you can look at lots of different lenses, right? But as staff member coming in going, what does this mean for tomorrow? Do you know what I'm saying, like, what are the ramifications if I'm not understanding it exactly, and so that, and again, not just this, but other ones as well?
I wondered, and I'm going to look at Linda, and hopefully that doesn't increase, but when we go from, when we've had revisions in the past, I loved how you always highlighted what was good for us, and I wonder if as we go through tiny chunks at a time, if you could tell us, this is really what's exactly the same as what we had with Neola and what's, is what's different? If that's too much, then maybe we don't need it, but it would be very nice to see, well, what did we have? How does that stay the same or change, so that we understand the impact of the new policies that we would have on our district? Much unusual.
I mean, we do it a little at a time. Yeah, yeah, I think we can work on that. I think that, that there are policies in here that we did not have before. So there, there's no similarity.
Yeah, I think in a way that's interesting, right? To know what would be good for us.
Jessica, do we still have access to the Neola policies? Like, can we compare and contrast on our own? And again, with the understanding that these are not one-to-one replacements?
We do not.
Okay.
No. So, I mean, we have hard copies of some policies, but we do not have the online access.
Okay.
We're no longer needing for that, so.
Thank you.
It's big money somewhere.
And I did, I mean, if I had the time, I would have done a deep dive, you know, to do that, but, you know, we're all wanting to get through these.
What I, what I think I really appreciated from Linda highlighting before is sometimes I wouldn't quite catch these subtleties that actually do have ramifications, and so having that set of eyes, knowing that, you know, you spent a lot of time thinking about, what does that look like, and that's it, I think would be, you know, extremely useful, and knowing that, yes, they are not one-to-one, and that sometimes we just want to compare them, and that's.
Jen, Linda, mind you, so one of the questions Katie just asked, and I'm wondering if more for the community, I heard her ask, like, how would a new staff member know what the policies of the district, so like, the onboarding kind of process, or, you know, so a staff would know tomorrow, like, what to do, like, what are the, kind of, the way that that works? When are the new staffs hired?
I don't, I don't all have a specific policy to deal with or others. You know, I think that happens through staff meetings and.
Some more at the local, they do, right?
Okay.
We do also, you know, make sure that our new staff members have a lot of links to resources, so, you know, they know how to find those things, but then it's a matter of digging into more on their own and.
Thank you.
So are we good with, I'll sort of work on creating that schedule, and if there are other specific policies that are really outstanding, I know we've got a couple that we've asked questions about, but if there are others, if you want to email me those numbers, then we can make those a priority. I mean, I like starting with the 1,000s because I do think that, I mean, I think we can do that, and one night with a couple other things, I don't think that's a, that's a big deal at all.
And if you think that we can follow the ones that we are, that's the most questions, but still be careful that we don't overdo it because then we go back into the problem of too much at once, because some of the ones that we want to factor, some of the bigger ones, and so, as long as we stay conscious that, you know, they will get spread out, we committed to doing this all year, and I think, as long as we start with the student section.
And I can strike some balance there, so if I find that there's a couple of policies that maybe I think are, you know, a little bit more in-depth and more heavy, maybe we can add those to a couple of policies that I can, you know, be a little bit easier. If that sounds okay? I'm just going to quickly turn this on and for the other item, on my report, I think that you all are very well aware, but tomorrow is the first day of school, and so what I was posting is just information on location and hours. You know, we had a unique start to our schedule this year, which I think in the long run has worked out pretty well. In that our teachers and staff worked last week, three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, where we had some pretty intense professional development in our traditional back-to-school meetings, open houses, those kinds of things. On Thursday and Friday, we did have some optional professional development that a small group of staff members participated in, and then we also spent some time with our new staff members, you know, helping them understand where to find information and kind of going back to those resources that I just mentioned. It's, oh, thank you, Tim. Yep. So, the nice thing is, is that we then had the weekend and then also today to make sure that we're really ready to go tomorrow. So, I feel good about where we are for tomorrow. I think our bond projects have come together nicely when we were here two weeks ago. I had quite a bit of anxiety about how things would shape up, but they seem to look fairly nice. There have been lots of great informative videos that have been shared with parents so that parents know how to navigate through our new traffic loop at the middle school, even for families that are new to any of our buildings, this is where you drop off, this is where you pick up. Lots of great communication about lunch and breakfast being free for every student. So we're excited and we're ready, and we have a three-day week this week, so we'll have students Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then a long weekend before we lead into a four-day week next week before the Labor Day holidays. So, aside from the forecast on Thursday being quite warm, I think everything looks great for this week, so we're excited and ready to go. And I know there's been a lot of ups and downs, and you all as community members, I'm sure you've heard a lot of the excitement and the anxiety and all those kinds of things that come with the start of the year. I will say the two days of professional development that we engaged in last week is called Capturing Kids' Perks. It's a great program that really focuses on building relationships and creating those safe spaces for our students, and the feedback that we've received from our staff has been outstanding, so we are dividing our staff into small groups, so groups for 50 people, and this professional development included certified staff, support staff, bus drivers, administrators, all across the board. Everyone was able to take part in this training. And so now we'll work at the building level and at the district level to make sure that we're implementing the program with finality. We'll identify what's called process champions, and those folks will be the ones that are really leading the charge in their buildings to make sure they continue to update this program. So, we're excited about it, you know, and we had the opportunity to attend as well. I think it was really a powerful and positive way to pick up our school year, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions yet.
I just want to say a couple of things. One, I've been hearing from teachers that I know that it's one of the best professional development experiences I've ever had, so that's to say, and in terms of what I'm hearing from Katie, I'm hearing more about, you know, good things than I'm hearing about anxieties. I'm wondering, just say a little bit. And I'm wondering, just say a little bit about the local purpose that some of our students get to enjoy this year?
Yeah, definitely. So we received a grant, it's a Farm Table Grant, and it's for Colton Elementary and Mount Pleasant Middle School only. I don't know how those two buildings were selected. I don't know, Ginger, I think it's maybe random?
It seemed like it to me.
Okay. So it's a partnership with Magnus Garden. That's the local farm that we'll be using. And so students will have farm fresh options on the salad bar, farm fresh options that will be served to them. And, you know, in the long run, we'd like to expand the program to all of our buildings. But to be able to start this program at those two buildings is really exciting. At the open house at Colton, they did have the farmer there, and they had good representation from the garden. They gave students multicolored cauliflower to try. And reports that I remember is lots of students tried it, lots of students liked it. I don't know that I would quickly embrace multicolored cauliflower, but maybe. So they're really excited about that program. And again, that is something that we hope to expand over time. So there's a lot of really exciting things happening in food service. And I'm genuinely, if you want to say, I brought the free lunch and just.
Yeah, just another reminder that we are able to offer all of our students free breakfast and free lunches here, which is very exciting. We're still working on all the backend stuff, but we're able to start school right off the bat, even without the, all the implications and all that stuff being fully approved. So right off the bat tomorrow, free breakfast, free lunch for every student is very exciting.
And the biggest thing with it is that we do still need families to complete the educational benefits form. That used to be called the free and reduced lunch form. And we will send out additional correspondence so that families really understand that that form means a lot more to the district than just free meals. And so even if you're likely, or you're fairly certain that you're not going to qualify, we still need families to do that so we can continue to receive the grant funding that's tied to that information.
I really appreciate how the district explained that through social media. In fact, I've shared that every time, just to remind people, please fill out this form, maybe, no, you're not eligible. And in fact, I've had friends in other states who appreciate and understand at the national level, at the federal level, why it's important. So that was great information.
Is that form now part of the final forms?
It is, yes.
What do we use? And is that now deployed to all buildings or just?
No, it is. Final forms is in all buildings, and that form is a part of that process too. So if you are a parent and you are verifying all of your students' enrollment information, so there's two ways parents are going to use final forms. One would be for a new enrollment, and then the other one would be to just verify your information at the start of every school year. Or if you needed to go in and make changes, say you moved throughout the year, you could do that through final forms. But that is for all buildings, all programs in our district.
You're just agreeing that just because I've been getting a lot of feedback on declining materials for all students.
Sure, sure. So every building has a little bit of a different take on that. But through the Project to Wear grant and through a partnership with the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, no student has to bring their own supplies this year. So you may have noticed as we walked in here, Mount Pleasant High School, they have supplies ready to be distributed to students. They did a lot of that at the open house, but they know that probably only 75% of their students were here that day. At the elementary level, our teachers have purchased the supplies that they needed for their classrooms, so they're already in their classrooms. But we just really know that, you know, sometimes the purchasing of school supplies can be such a large financial burden to our families. We want to be able to take that away from them. So thanks to the Project to Wear grant, we're able to do that so that no student will have to bring supplies. Our buildings do have also donated stanchions or backpacks. If students need a backpack, they just really need to ask their teacher and they'll be able to get that for them. So we're very fortunate to have the great relationship that we do have with the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, and we're really fortunate to live in such a generous community where all these things are possible for our students.
I'm aligned with our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. That's very powerful.
Definitely. That was actually where we got the idea from our EEI task force, and all the work that they've done, that if we could provide these supplies for all families, that it would be removing one barrier for families.
For tonight, can I start the year?
Can I mention that to go along with our back-to-school orientation, our group teacher orientation was held at the Ziegling Center, and that was also thanks to a Project to Wear grant. So we were able to have our back-to-school meeting with our new teachers at the Ziegling Center. And then after, after our meeting, they were able to do a tour of the Ziegling Center with the guide.
That's awesome.
It was all thanks to our connection with Project to Wear. We also gave all of our new staff an orange shirt in advance and also a book that goes with it to describe why we celebrate and honor orange shirt day. It's great.
Thank you.
And it's really nice to be here.
I'm hopeful.
Linda, do you want to, do you want to work for GSRP?
Sure, sure. So we are very excited that we have great news about GSRP. Our programs that we just started, or where we're hoping to start, are nice and full at Bowles and Coleman. And so now we're still making sure that we have all of the licensing things in place. So we had to lead test multiple areas, do all the LARA testing, which is a special form of fingerprints for all of the teachers and the parapros. There's a special training Michigan Registry. That's all clicking right along. We are hoping that we will be able to welcome students to the Bowles and Coleman program by September 25th. They're in staff home visits soon. And then we're still really trying to recruit to fill up Rosebush. So Rosebush has three classrooms. That program is still up and running. We've had a few families want to come back to the Mount Pleasant, the new classrooms, just because of transportation. But we're trying to think of, we want to make sure that families know that there's room in Rosebush, and we want to make sure we fill up those programs as well. So lots of exciting things going on. Bringing these cute little people and that's where I'm gonna spend my days when the days get rough.
And when the Rosebush program starts a week earlier?
Yes, yep. They are starting their home visits this week. I think the Rosebush open house is September 8th. And they start just a little bit earlier since they have been doing this longer. We're starting the program a year, so we don't have to have the same 180 days since our new programs in Mount Pleasant are just expanding.
Thank you, Tal. Because originally you were saying you were hoping to do it at the beginning of the year.
Right.
I mean, that's what they should, just thank you. Someone did a lot of work, so thank you.
Where did that lie?
Yeah, I would say most of that work was Linda Boyd, Stephanie Meiner, and Kim Bishop. They've done a large amount of work.
Kim Bishop has been amazing. She has taken on the role of enrollment specialist. So when focusing all online, she calls the family, she goes through all the questions. She can help decide whether or not they qualify or if they can join us with a sliding scale. So she has really done a ton of behind-the-scenes work.
So definitely an exciting week for us. And that's off my report.
Thank you, General. That moves us to the requested financial report.
Can't say equally as exciting. I have for you the general fund and special service funds comparing budgets actual for the month of July 2023 compared to 2022. You'll see that the month of July, business-wise, is pretty slow for the school district. For general fund, we have 1% of revenue actual compared to budget this year and 1% last year. Expenditures are at 4% of budget this year and 6% last year. For our special service fund, there's hardly any activity going on in July. We had a little bit of revenue in our self-sustaining sports program. And we have some revenue expenditures in our children's learning center that goes year-round. So in July, the revenue is 3% of budget this year compared to 3% last year, and their expenditures are 2% of budget compared to 3% this year. Excuse me. For our treasure report, to general fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $8 million. We have revenue in the month of July of $5.5 million and disbursements of $5.2 million. That brings us the balance on July 31st of $8.3 million. This is the timing interval. You will see that start getting a little bit bigger because we don't receive state aid in the month of September. So you'll see the cash kind of building up a little bit so we can make it through the winter months when we're going to have payment. For the debt retirement funds, on June 30th, we had a balance of $718,000. We had a tiny bit of interest income, maybe a little bit of tax revenue of $882, and no disbursements. So these, there's three different funds here in the debt retirement fund. So we could pay down all the bonds that our taxpayers have approved for us. Right now, we'll be growing the revenue from tax revenue, and then we will be paying interest payment in the middle of the year, and then a principal and interest payment towards the end of the year. So this will build up revenue, and then you'll see a couple of big chunks of disbursements and then you spend it back down in the process following here. Capital project fund, on June 30th, was $21.3 million, receipts of interest income of $87,000, and disbursements of $1.6 million. That raises the balance on July 31st of $19.8 million.
Thank you, Ginger. We received correspondence, you know, since the last meeting, if I may please spend it. I have princess to our citizens' request to reverse the board on any agenda among agenda A. I don't think we have received any details. So we're gonna move on to our present agenda. The first item on our present agenda is the approval of minutes from the August 14th, 2023 special meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Sure, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. We also have to approve the bills for the month.
I approve that we approve the bills for the month.
Uh, second. You do second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, thank you very much. We have a resolution today under new business.
I'll just briefly mention, so this resolution would allow our district to become a part of the Michigan Schools Energy Cooperative. This is a group that we have worked with on and off for several years, and it will allow us to do two things. One is to lock into a rate for electricity that would potentially save our district funds in the future. And then it also allows us to be a part of clean energy initiatives, which we really like to be a part of. So you'll notice, I'm going to read the resolution. You'll notice in the resolution, we are pretty vague in the amount of our energy that we would purchase. We have written in 0 to 100%, because right now we just don't know. But we need to pass some form of resolution in order to be a part of this program prior to August 31st. So that's why we're asking you to approve the resolution this evening. Once we get more details and we know exactly where we would fall into place, we can come back to getting the board moving forward.
I can read the resolution and open it up to see if there's any questions. Board of Education of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, herein after referred to as the district, give our results as follows. Whereas the district is created reducing its environmental impact and operating costs. And whereas solar energy is a clean renewable source of energy that can aid the district in achieving its goals. And whereas the district is currently a member of the Michigan Schools Energy Cooperative and a participant in the Michigan Schools Energy Cooperative Electric Choice Program. And MICEC, which is the abbreviation, has received a proposal from most of our clean energy, a CMS energy company, for the installation of an off-site solar energy system that will generate electricity for the school district. Now therefore, we have resolved that the district approves that MICEC, as agent on behalf of the district, enter into a 15-year power purchase agreement from 0 to 100% of the district's annual electricity usage with no start in energy at a fixed rate not to exceed $0.075 per kilowatt hour for the generation and delivery of solar electricity with commercial operation expected to begin in June 2025. Thank you about the right unit.
So it'd be $7.5 cents per kilo-mon hour.
That fits. Any questions?
My only question is about the timeline. 15 years seems like a really long commitment. Is there, I mean, I don't foresee any reason why we wouldn't want to break that relationship. Like, is there a penalty for dissolving a relationship early?
I haven't seen an agreement that lets us dissolve it early or if there is a penalty.
Okay.
I think it's really more beneficial than anything because as we know, the cost of everything in 15 years is going to be much more than what it is now. So I think it's really a good beneficial way for the district to lock in this price now and see where the usage goes. They're just starting to create this whole solar field, so.
Now that makes sense, I was kind of thinking it was backwards. I think not for the interest tax.
That's important, as you know, on education. So we okay approving the resolution?
I'm okay with approving the resolution for the Michigan Electric Cooperative agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, since it's a resolution, you can do it all.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, you're fine. All right, walk up. Katie, wanna start us up?
Katie Reed, yes.
Jessica Joinigan, yes.
Akin Thompson, yes. Tim Wodker, yes.
Lee Pangone, yes.
Amy Park, yes.
Thank you, everybody. We are looking at the repeal of the Miola policies next.
I think first we have the approval of the, you're right, EDH caution. That's okay. So in your board record this evening, you do have an tentative agreement between the district and the Mount Pleasant Community Education Association. If you remember back in June, we asked that you extend our master agreement for six months to give us a little bit more time to meet and to put together an agreement. So we were able to meet several times over the last month. We had a really good, really good time together. So I'll just quickly go through. In the tentative agreement, we have changes to the recognition clause in that we've taken out the Saginaw Chippewa Residential Treatment Center. That center no longer exists, so that's why it's being removed. More clarification on number of teaching hours, and then also the rate of pay at what their teachers will be paid if they do an extended contract. So if they do an extended contract for tutoring or anything like that, then the rate of pay is already set. And we did that as a percentage of their Step 1 of the VA teacher pay scale. That is a comparable agreement to what we have with the Mount Pleasant Education Association. So very similar. We look to add our paid holidays. We are really working, as you all know, with all of our groups, that Good Friday is no longer recognized as a paid holiday in our district. It doesn't make a difference for the calendar this year because Good Friday is within the week of spring break. But for future years, should we want to have a happy day of school on that day, we want to make sure that we have that possibility. So we were able to successfully negotiate that out of all of our other master agreements this summer, and so this is the final one. We also were all sort of puzzled by the recognition of the 4th of July is a paid holiday. For a group that doesn't typically work during the summer, that's not a typical holiday. So if they are working during the summer, that would be an extended contract pay. So it would be an additional pay above and beyond their typical wages. The previous master agreement was silent as far as what happened to personal planes if they weren't used during the calendar year. And so we put in there that they would roll over into sick days. And then for their sick leave payout, if they retire from the district, that each member would receive $25 per day for each unused sick day. Appendix A clarifies to some state language that is no longer current. So the CEUs are no longer used by the state of Michigan. The wage proposal, we have agreed to a 3.5 wage increase on schedule for all members of this association. This would be for the 2023-2024 school year. We will not do a wage opener this year, but we will do a wage opener for next year. And then finally, you'll see that it's a two-year agreement through June 30th of 2025. And that does allow us to continue to stagger our master agreements, and we don't find ourselves in the spot that we were this summer where every master agreement expired on June 30th. We prefer to have a little bit more flexibility there in the staggering. So we're asking that you approve this agreement this evening. It would go into effect, like I said, until June 30th of 2025.
Basically, a motion to verify the attached tentative agreement with the Mount Pleasant Community Education Association.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I think we do have the repeal of the Miola policies.
That's a process that I would want to read. Do you want to read that?
Yes, I can. It's lengthy, um, but I'm happy to read it. Starting at the beginning, uh, county of Isabella State of Michigan, uh, therefore referred to after this as the District. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is held at the Mount Pleasant High School Cafeteria within the boundaries of the District on the twenty-first day of August twenty twenty-three at six thirty o'clock in the afternoon. Um... All right, I'm going to start at the resolution. This, we, uh, who's here and who's not. Um, whereas the Board identified a need to review its current board policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines. And whereas the District's administration, um, after that called administration, has reviewed the true law firm policy manual or policy manual, and recommends the policy manual for consideration in the form presented for board review approval to replace the Board's existing policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines. And whereas the administration has reviewed any and all legal settlements and resolution agreements between the District and any state or federal agency, as applicable, that address the modification of agency review of existing board policy. And the Board has considered the impact of the settlements or agreements when recommending adoption of the policy manual. And whereas the administration recommends that the Board repeal its existing policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines, with the exception of existing board policy E, um, I don't remember the number, uh, five one oh seven, maybe?
Five two oh seven.
Fifty-two oh seven, concerning student bullying and adopt a policy manual with the exception of policy fifty-two oh seven anti-bullying, concerning student bullying, which requires a public hearing before board adoption, pursuant to revised school code section one three one zero B, M C L three eighty dot one three one zero B. And whereas, the Board has carefully reviewed, considered and evaluated the policy manual collectively and as individual board members and the administration's recommendation. Now therefore, we resolve that, one, the Board accepts the administration's recommendation to adopt the policy manual. Two, all existing board policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines are hereby repealed, including all policies and bylaws that by their terms require a reading or hearing before repeal, modification, or adoption, with the exception of existing board policy fifty-two oh seven concerning student bullying, which requires a public hearing before being repealed and replaced. The Board hereby adopts the policy manual except policy fifty-two oh seven anti-bullying in the form presented and recommended by the administration as the Board's new policies and bylaws, including those forms and administrative guidelines in the policy manual for the purpose of governing the District. Yet, four, the administration shall promptly review District publications and forms that they reference, but now repeal board policies and revise those publications and forms as necessary to align them with the newly adopted policy manual within thirty calendar days after this resolution. Five, the Board's adoption of the policy manual except policy fifty-two oh six shall take immediate effect. Six, at a board meeting scheduled for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Board will hold a public hearing concerning proposed policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying in the policy manual. And seven, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same are hereby rescinded. Is there, well, no, we need to do, well, we need a motion first. Is there a motion to accept the repeal?
Can I ask a question first? Are we repealing and replacing in one, also, like, that's, it's covering both things, isn't it?
No.
Next one will be the...
I got no reading to do tonight.
Okay. I just saw it.
Shall we read it?
I move that we accept this proposal.
A second.
All right, vocal. Katie?
Katie, read, yes. Jessica, joining in, yes.
Aiken Thompson, yes.
Tim Wodker, yes.
We didn't pay one, yes.
Amy Bach, yes.
Thank you, everybody. So next, we approve the true policies, um, four thousand and five thousand.
Disappointing clarification, shouldn't that be one thousand to five thousand?
So we have, we did approve policies one thousand, the one thousands, two thousands, and three thousands last week. Um, this resolution should say, um, and if this resolution is just for policy fifty-two oh seven?
Yes.
So right now, what we need is just the approval of the four thousands and five thousands, and then the resolution is for policy fifty-two oh seven. Because at the last board meeting, we approved the one thousands, two thousands, and three thousands with an effective date of August twenty-second, or implementation. So we need to, tonight, just approve four thousands and five thousands with an, uh, an effective date of August twenty-second. And then this next resolution is just for policy fifty-two oh seven.
So is there a motion to approve true policies four thousand and five thousand effective on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in paper?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of fifty-one oh six for the reasons I see.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'll thank you, yes.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. And then we have to approve policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying. I can read the, um, resolution. That's a new board package. All right. Whereas on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Board repealed the Board's then-existing policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines, and adopted the true law firm policy manual. Policy manual, except that, uh, Board retained its board policy fifty-five one seven oh one concerning student bullying, pending a session, uh, statute, can't say that word, statutorily required public hearing on proposed policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying in the policy manual. And whereas, consistent with revised school code section one three one zero B, M C L three eighty dot one three one zero B, the Board upheld a public hearing on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three concerning proposed policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying, which would replace the Board's existing policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines concerning student bullying. And whereas, the Board has carefully considered proposed policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying, the administration's recommendation, and information and comments provided during the public hearing. Now therefore, we resolve that, one, the Board accepts the administration's recommendation to adopt policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying. Two, policy fifty-two oh seven on anti-bullying is hereby adopted and replaces all existing board policies, bylaws, and administrative guidelines concerning student bullying. Three, the Board's adoption of policy fifty-two oh seven will take immediate effect. Four, the administration shall promptly review District publications and forms that they reference but now repeals student bullying policy and revise those publications and forms as necessary to align with the newly adopted policy fifty-two oh seven within thirty calendar days of this resolution. And five, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same are hereby rescinded. Any questions on this? That's, um, well, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Seconded.
Vocal. Katie, read, yes. Jessica, joining in, yes.
Aiken Thompson, yes. Tim Wodker, yes.
We didn't pay one, yes.
Amy Bach, yes.
Thank you, everybody. And moves us to the approval of building handbooks.
In your board, um, uh, board drive this evening, you have a copy of every handbook around your program in our district, including our transportation department. It is, um, customary that at the beginning of every school year, our board does approve the handbooks. Um, I know that, um, for our elementary buildings, typically those handbook pages are printed in their, in front of their agendas that all students are given. So that's how that information is shared with families, uh, for the high school and middle school. Those links are given to families through their, uh, we got a glance, the electronic version, so that everything's online for them. We do ask that our parents sign the handbook acknowledgement stating that they understand that they're responsible for those things in the handbook. Um, our next big task over this year, given the work that's happening this evening, is that we need to really compare our handbooks to our policies from TRIM and make sure that everything aligns. Uh, one of the services that TRIM does offer, since we now are now a policy client, is a handbook service as well. So they'll provide sample handbooks for us, and then they will also review our current handbooks, um, and give us suggestions for improvement. So the high school and middle school recently, last summer, went through their handbook pretty deep, uh, took a detailed look, I'm sorry, after a handbook, uh, under the guidance of the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. So, um, I don't know that we'll see a ton of differences, but we will spend this year doing that, um, comparing it to our policies and making sure we're in good shape. So anyway, just a blanket approval this evening, um, of our school building and program handbooks for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation, uh, of the handbooks for all our buildings?
So moved. Seconded.
All in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.
Just, I don't know, we will, um, pull that folder back out of this meeting and keep it in the board drive so that you can easily access that throughout the year. I know that's, uh, it's nice to have those electronic copies right there, so they, it won't be tucked away in archive meetings. It'll be out, so it'll be easier to play all the time, so.
And I wonder, I know that we've talked about making sure they all align and talk with each other and have consistent language. I wonder too, as we move towards our strategic plan, where we start to tweak things a little bit, and, you know, especially provisions and mission statements and that, and that get updated in those kind of books that are getting revised every time.
Sure.
Can I ask Mr. Backtrack a little? Our new policy will be up on our website.
It will be up on our website tomorrow morning.
Or forty books is over here.
Kevin's on.
I just, I really like how the community resources, wherein I saw those in several, I know sometimes there's the discussion about when people need extra help, where do they find it? And I thought that's a really nice piece to have right there.
Are you talking about the handbooks?
Yeah, the handbooks, yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is approval of two new activity accounts. Uh, you have the documentation in your board drive this evening. The first is for Mount Pleasant High School for a student parking fund. Um, they want to be able to take the money that they use for parking fees and use it to provide different activities and fund reward things for students. You know that they've been focused on their P P I S program here, so it's a nice way to fund student incentives and that kind of thing. The second activity account is an account that we traditionally do every year for our incoming classes. So the incoming freshmen this year, believe it or not, are the class of twenty twenty-seven. Um, I heard for that, so, uh, we're asking that you approve an activity account for them, so any of the funds that they raise for incoming in prom and those kinds of things can be put into our account for them.
Can you talk a little bit about, um, why I'm just fifty dollar?
Yeah, the biggest reason to have a parking permit is so that we know who is in our parking lots. And so that we know that when vehicles are here, they're supposed to be here. We know that they're safe and we know that, who they belong to. Also means that we know that they're parking in the right spots and, and they're doing the right thing. So students, um, you know, apply for the parking permits, we get all the information on their vehicles. Certainly, if someone had a vehicle and didn't have the fifteen dollars, we'd help them and take care of that for them. But it's just a way to make sure that we have a good system of checks and balances, so that we know who's here every day.
Joan, I don't know if it matters, but, um, it, that was a piece of Davis, it was just, this, uh, um, so I didn't know if that needed to be changed in order to improve better now. The first one.
On the first one?
Yeah, first.
Oh, yeah.
My fifth box.
We will make that correction.
Is there a motion to accept the two new activity counts?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. We have reservations today.
Yes, good evening. Um, we are sad to say goodbye to Ashley Carpenter. Ashley is heading out of town for another position as a physical educator, and she was a Mount Pleasant grad. So she said she needs to spread her wings a little, so we're sad to see your call. Um, and then Garrett Winglikowski has been our machine trades instructor, and, um, we received his resignation this morning as well. I'm sad to see you go.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of our two, um, two employees?
I wouldn't want to grab, but I'm not offering, except a motion to receive these resignations.
Second.
All in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have one, one, it's one. Yes, one hired, one new hired.
We'd like to recommend Sunny Ponce to be hired as the new high school physical education slash health slash health teacher. When Ashley left, Mr. Taylor slid down to Mount Pleasant Middle School and then made a vacancy at Mount Pleasant High School. And, uh, Mr. Ponce is joining us after teaching about fifteen years in Texas.
Is there a motion to accept the hire of Sunny Ponce?
So moved. Second.
All in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome to the district. I think that leaves us with our Board of Education discussion.
Just one quick comment. Linda, thank you, because many, many years it's been a frantic hire at the last minute. And this year, it was basically great, and you were twelve people summer, so, thank you, because it's easier to bring people on earlier than at the last minute, so.
It was a busy summer, but we were able to keep up. And I do appreciate now that we're also, um, familiar with Zoom, and we were able to, you know, interview some people from far, far away and bring some folks into the district. So that's been a positive of our post-COVID learning.
Well, again, there is diversity, actually, inclusion is bringing in a larger amount of people.
That's moving.
As part of the comment, I sent everyone out, and I saw articles say about turnover and seniority in Mount Pleasant. It was one of the better statistics, perhaps, in Michigan, but retention and seniority in the district, so. And who knows, the entire team and all the administrators were achieving that. I would say, what, ninety plus, ninety-five percent of the districts were struggling, or were actually trying to succeed. That's awesome.
I think we should be a little bit right. I think it's such a big deal. We've talked about this table over the last few years about tension and exit interviews, and I think seeing some external data um, that is independent from us, that reinforces, um, that we are doing some things right. It was really exciting. Thank you, Tim, for sharing this.
Now, so last thing I would say, um, I went to McGuire's Open House this week, that street. A great experience. Um, there were a lot of people there, a lot of families, a lot of very excited kids, a lot of very excited parents. It was a very nice experience, so I think, uh, all the educators are taking that extra time in the evenings to open houses, uh, to meet with their families and introduce their kids. It's very, it's very sweet seeing a child introduce themselves with their parents to their teacher over and over, right? A very nice process that they went through. It was a very nice, a very nice experience. That's all.
I did want to share, uh, that our September, on September seventh, we have our annual Grains and Grates event. That's hosted by Mount Pleasant Public Schools Education Foundation. For those that don't know, uh, the Education Foundation funds a lot of grants for our teachers and our schools. Uh, and so this is their fundraiser event, it's really the main event they have on the seventh. Um, tickets are being sold, sold by, uh, Education Foundation members. Um, and we have one right here, uh, and I, yeah, so I think it's easy to get one.
Definitely, yeah, I'm happy to sign. I think Katie already sold all of hers, so she forgot to, well, I did. But, uh, yeah, we definitely lost some tickets, so if anyone, um, if anyone has any questions or is interested, certainly, they can call my office, and we'll make sure they, that they get them.
There's also information about the event on Facebook.
And I would like to encourage our ward to go. It would be fun if you could all show up. Uh, and so if you can, and you want to reserve that night, um, and spend that time together, definitely. be great. And I'm glad you're in the meeting. Thank you, everybody.